Good afternoon, or should I say good morning? The game's not running that well, so it's time to study more. And one spot I have tried to study a bit, but didn't have the time lately is tree betting from the small blind. Because I can say that so far my small blind strategy has been pretty passive. Not tree betting that much, prefer to call and when we call, we don't make much money, so... Should tree bet more and when you tree bet out of position, there's a lot of nasty spots on the flop, not sure what to do. So that's what we're going to explore today. And we're going to explore it with PLO Vision running one's new GTO, not the GTO, solver tool. So what you see here is a vision and the situation on the table is that red is whose turn it is and we are now out of position. We are pre for back pressure, which means that as it's a tree bet board, we have tree bet. So here this six max button opened, we raised... Alright, new hand. So button opens, we tree bet, he calls and then flop is eight six twos and now we have a queen, queen, then five and now we have to think about should we check? Should we bet half a pot or should we bet full pot? And it's that easy. And just say, "What do you do?" And if you guys want, we can open the poll. Because we have the option to use this one. Where now you can say, "What would you like to do?" Oh, thank you Zuko for following. So there we have the poll and now you can press 1, 2 or 3 on the chat. And just if I'm, I would be that, okay, we check here, I would put 1 on the chat and you can see it adds to the ball, so you can participate. But I will open it if there's interest because it requires some clicking. So if people aren't using it, not using it, then there's no point of me putting on. So we can wait until there's more people. But what would I do here? If I tree bet queens, then very often on small states, I would stab the flop because we have fold equity. And now the thing is that in solver strategy, the button is fighting for the pots as much as solver can. Or as much as it's, it's not minus EV. But in real life, in small states, people don't fight these pots. People don't raise eight and nine type of hands, they are happy to call. And they fold a ton of hands. So, but I would assume that solver probably checks here, not sure. And solver does check and here's the overall overall range graph on this board. Tree better checks half of his hands. And now if we want to see like how do we play certain hands, we could put here on the top right, that says the queens. And then we will get, what's the frequencies with all the queens? And it's 60% checks, so most of it checks. And if we make so that we don't have a flush draw, then queens without the flush draw check 75% of times, which is quite a lot. Alright, and with reasons, we could continue. Like we check, what does the opponent do, what do we do? So we can always go forward with the hand. I think this is quite here, check fold, I would assume. And now we can say, "What does button do?" Let's say button bets half a pot. And now do we fold call or pot? And I would definitely, if we check the flop when we are folding and so is solver. So you can explore the situations and I had a lot of questions. Which one is better, PLO Vision or the chain and this pocket tool? Because they came out almost at the same time and both of them are very good. They are a bit different. Vision is more for post-flop, pocket tool at the moment is more for pre-flop. But you can do both, with both. And it's just, vision is graphically probably, it's easier to use, it looks nicer and so on. But both of them are really good, it's like, whether you like football or ice hockey, there's no absolute truth. And hello Razam. Right, we tree bet monster ace, king, queen and we hit the ace high board. Top pair, cut shot. Definitely I would pot. Not sure what you guys would do, but ace high board, tree better, we have the ace. And such a draw heavy board that I would like to use a big sizing. Not sure what solver does, let's see. No, solver would bet half a pot. But here's the thing. Tree betting from this small blind, when the board is with ace high, you can still see that pretty much the whole range is c-bet. So ace high board after you tree bet, c-bet your whole range and two thirds is going to be a half a pot bet. And what do we pot? We pot ace king with backdoor flush draw. Yeah, that's about it. Ace, king, queen, if we have not backdoor flush draw and one blocker to hearts, then it becomes a pot, but now when we don't block neither the flush draw or the backdoor flush and we don't have any, it's half a pot bet. Alright. What if opponent pots? Is this a stack off or not? We have ace, king, queen. And I would actually assume that it isn't because this raising versus tree better is damn strong. But no, solver would stack off. Or it would just call? Wow. That would be a nasty spot for the turn when the SPR is one fifth. Alright. Queen, queen, then, then, board is ace, seven, three. What do we do? Just one minute ago, we learned that on ace high boards, we should c-bet pretty much our whole range. So the question now is mostly should we bet half a pot or pot? We don't have the poll Razam at the moment, waiting for more people. So if you want the poll, let me know and then I will start the click here. There's just quite a lot of work to get it working, so if there's only one or two, nah, not going to do it. But if we get more participants, then definitely we can open the polls. Once again, I'm not sure what solver does here. I mean, we don't have much, so we have a pot, we had a much better price for the bluff. But then again, we don't have much, so we want the maximum fold equity. So I would probably go for half, if I had to choose half a pot or pot, I would choose half a pot. But it's a check. Wow. So the ace check seven is always a bet, but ace seven, three, we check one third. That's a surprise. You learn new stuff every day. I would be thinking that on ace seven, three, the tree better who has all the aces in his range and probably more ace high hands, I would assume that it would bet here ton of hands. And this hand is always a check. When there's no suits. With the flush draw, it becomes a pot. And with one heart, what? If this queen of spades would be queen of hearts, it would be half a pot bet. So I wasn't that far away. So you can see that solver, solver uses those flushes. For most people, queen, queen, then, then with these suits is the same hand as we change the queen of spades to queen of hearts. There's a lot of players who doesn't see a lot of difference, but with solver, that's the difference between betting. So that one blocker, which actually increases the fold equity by around 4%. Is the difference maker here. Alright, top two with aces on queen four, three. And as I said in the beginning, I haven't done enough work by, or to practice small blind tree betting, so I'm probably the worst one here to answer. And let's see, we have more people, so let's open up the poll. So what would you? Check, bet small or bet pot? That's so easy. And I might be probably the worst one here to tell what solver does here because I haven't worked with solver. I know what I would do here on, on small states, PLO. But the thing is, initial thought is always to bet, top two, why not? But then you start to think that is this a trick question? Is this a board where we want to bet a lot? And when in doubt, oh, it depends. In Finland, we say that when in doubt, bet pot. But with solver, when in doubt, always say it's a mixed strategy. But I would probably go half a pot. I mean, it's a board that we don't want to pot with our whole range. And here we can see that most of times it is a half a pot, then it's a pot. And with ace, ace, queen, four, it actually is a pot 64% of the times. So pretty much only when we have just a backdoor flush, we bet half a pot and with everything else, we pot. Here you can see ace, ace, queen, four is the filter and the suits. So every time when we have just a backdoor flush draw, it's half a pot. When we don't have anything, it's a pot. And when we have ace, ace, queen, four with the nut flush draw, where we cross the board, it's a check to protect our checking range. So once again, same hand, three different strategies based on the suits of your hand. Wow. You live and learn. Seven, three, deuce, we hit the top pair and overs. And we are not blocking any flushes. What would solver do? I mean, it's a board that shouldn't hit buttons. Range two in, in real life, I would bet because then pretty much most cards from six to check, we can bet if the ace comes, we can bet. If three or deuce comes, we can bet the turn. I mean, we can barrel pretty much all the turns besides four, five, six or hearts. But I think solver checks here. And we have unanimous Twitch chat saying it's a check, but no, it's half a pot. But you can see here with the rainbow, it's 18% of times check. So sometimes it's a mixed strategy, always say mixed. With solver, if you're in doubt, say it's a mixed strategy and you always get it right. But yeah, it's, it's some of the time it's a check, but most of the time it's half a pot. But it's funny, it's a... With this hand, we only pot when we have the flush draw and even then it's mostly a check. Alright. Tree betting ace, king, queen, check, hitting top pair, backdoor flush draw. My rule of thumb for small states is that in tree bet board, if you hit the top pair and there's no straight possibility, it's just get it in. And here we have top pair overcards. On real life, SPR three and half, I would pot then get it in. There aren't many hands that crush us in buttons range, but there's a lot of hands that will stack off and we're doing fine against and we have fold equity, I would pot. And we do have one blocker to backdoor, I mean, one blocker to flush and we have the backdoor flush. Increases our equity a little. And Twitch chat remains silent. Oh, I would pot it. No, it's half a pot. It's half a pot with everything else than three hearts. What? Worst logic in that, I mean, even if... Yeah, I understand half a potting when we have the nut flush. But if we, if we didn't have the king of hearts, so we only have the ace, king, queen, check with backdoor flush, it would be a check 100% of times. Well, I can disagree, but I'm wondering that what's the reason? Because we have a damn strong hand on tree bet board. If anyone knows, let me know, okay? Top two, check high flush draw, ace high board. And previously on ace, seven, three, if I remember right, we checked some of times and then we bet half a pot quite a lot and not much potting. So if we refer to that one, then I'm not sure if we should pot it here if this is half a pot. It's either the blue or the red one. You have the blue peel or you have the red peel and now you have to decide. I don't know. I wish there would be three quarters sizing because that would be a nice compromise. And the Twitch chat is 50/50. Chatpro Sunday, let's go for half a pot because it's the board where we half a pot a lot and it's right. And here we can see that even with this hand, it's one of the three times it's a pot. So Razam, if you wanted to pot, then it's one of the three times right. And in small states, you don't have to be balanced. You can pot this every time and no one is going to exploit you. So you don't have to be perfect. As long as you bet here, it's fine. So remember that solver strategy is not the absolute truth how you have to play PLO or otherwise you would be burned in bonfire. Now, it's, it's one strategy that is optimal versus another solver strategy. And the biggest thing is that you need to bet here, whether you bet half a pot, three quarters or full pot. I would say that in reality, the difference is not huge. If opponent hits the board, he plays with you. If he doesn't, he folds, no matter what your sizing. But the reason why we want to play with solver is that we learn strategies and patterns. We can see with solver, how does these certain blockers to flushes and backdoor flushes can be used in decision making? And I think that's one of the biggest things that solvers have done. People have realized the use of blockers in decision making, which wasn't there. I don't speak Chinese, I write using Google translator. Okay, do you have any idea, any idea of what I am saying? I actually tried, I was watching a Twitch chat, Twitch stream with my mobile and there, instead of writing to the small box with your, with your mobile phone, you could use speech to text. And I tried it and it didn't work. It's a nice feature, but it just didn't work. It was horrible. Alright, try aces, well, not try aces, cut shot and bottom pair. No flush blockers, only backdoor flush blocker. I know what I would do here. I would check. If a spade comes, we can sometimes use the blocker to represent the backdoor flush and we have the bottom pair, we have the cut shot, we would be happy to see the turn. But no one in the chat is going to check. I think it's a board that we should c-bet with high frequency, but the hand might be just too bad for it. Marshwash is following. Thank you. We are approaching 500 followers, insane. I'm going to disagree with the Twitch chat, I'm going to check, it might be horrible. Please don't hurt me. Yeah, oh, only 8% checks, that's, that's insane. On king, queen, four, we bet half a pot with pretty much our whole range. Some marginal pots, marginal checks. I didn't know that one, now I know, so... Wow, we bet half a pot with almost anything we have. Oh, it's copy's PPT range. Where can I see what are the hands that we check? Ah, alright. But the main thing is that on king, queen, four, we bet a lot with half a pot. Pretty much you can half a bet your whole range and it's very close to solver strategy, but I'm a bit surprised. Congratulations Twitch chat. You nailed it. Alright, top pair and flush draw. On board where straight is not possible, quite similar to the 10, 9, 8, 7 on seven, three, deuce. It's exactly same structure, almost exactly same hand. And there, if we had a flush draw, we would pot it. I would pot it here. And Twitch chat disagrees with me. Yeah. Hey chat bros, I would pot it. Top pair, overcards, flush draw, what could go wrong? Owned. Yeah, it's what, it's very similar to the previous one. And I remember there, we had top pair overs and flush draw, we would pot it. Now it would pot it, but it's very mixed strategy. Even with, with exactly queen and 9, 8, there's 30% of half a pots and even 30% of checks, so it's a mixed strategy, everyone is right. Welcome to solver world, everyone is right. Here's our hand. There's green, there's blue, there's red. Here. But potting is 58%, so most of the times we should pot it. And at the same time, I thought about, should we practice just what hands to tree bet? From small blind versus button open? Because I know that like ace, king, 5, 5, that wouldn't be standard tree bet for me. Oh, the poll is not open yet, sorry, now I open it. So then I thought that, okay, if we do the flop situation, we can see what hands small blind tree bet. So we can do the pre for training too. So if you are not sure what hands to tree bet in solver strategy, you don't have to tree bet in real life, remember that, this is not bible. But if you're not sure what solver tree bet, you can see it here at the same time. So we can focus on the flops, but you can also focus that, okay, would I tree bet that hand? And I mean ace, king, 5, 5. Well, now I would, but let's say three months ago, I would just fold the hand to, or button or call. Alright, 10, 8, 4 and we have nothing. Yeah, I'm wondering why would we bet? And good afternoon, all my fucking god high stakes database. Yes, we check. And remember the graph here is overall strategy on this board without tree betting range. Which is good to understand. Because what you can do here is that you can pick up certain boards that, okay, this board we should c-bet a lot. Which means that most of our hands we see, but then it's easier to figure out if there's some hands we wouldn't. Or if it's a board where we put our whole, most of our range. And this medium semi-connected, you can see that it's very, very mixed, but still half of our range chips here. So 10, 8, 4 is a board where we don't call bananas. Ace, 5, 5, we bet everything. And here. Ace, king, 5, 5 is check even with the nut flush draw, which is surprising. Oh, and if there's a spot that you would like to explore more, like what do we do if opponent calls? Then certainly no, we can see, we can go forward with the hand. Alright, 10, 7, 5 and we have overcards, cut shot and flush draw. And these are nasty spots, these are, these are the ones I hate. And Puxi is following, thank you. 500 here we come. And these are the spots I hate. I mean, if the hand was stronger, it would be easier to just decide how much to bet. If the hand was weaker, it would be easier to just check. But then we have these mediocre hits and, oh boy. And if you bet, he shoves, do we get it in? Of course, with the king high flush draw, it's easier than with the queen high flush draw and so on. But I hate these spots. So I'm interested to see what the solver does here. And then we have mixed strategy on the chat, 50/50 and now potting is the winners, I'll let's pot. And no, everyone got it wrong. It's a check. Yeah, you can see with, it's a check, but what if opponent bets? Is this a check call or check raise? Because that's what I'm interested, that we want to check raise certain semi-bluffs. So is this one of those hands? And let's actually finish the poll and put a new one, sorry, now. Would you check call, check photo or check raise? And of course now, the text on the poll is wrong, but you just use 1, 2, 3 from the left. 1 for phone, 2 for call, 3 for poll. I mean, it's the same thing, the check charm. Let's do it. No, no, it would just call and, oh, only 20% of hands is a check raise. Alright. So be it, it's a check call. Try his aces on 9, 8, deuce. Once we do this, I'm interested to see what we, if we have ace, ace, queen, 9, where we block a lot of two pairs. People would check. Yeah. But does it matter if we put ace, ace, queen, 9? Yeah, you can see that it pots a lot. It's pots with flush draws, with any flush blocker, so pretty much either nut flush draw or one blocker to the hearts, it would pot ace, ace, queen, 9. either not flush draw or one blocker to the hearts, it would put ace, ace, queen, nine. Because it blocks two pairs way more than the dews. And here with the single heart, it will still put it, which is, yeah, once again. The suits are the difference maker. So even if you had one heart in your hand, you could get more aggressive. Uh, this, this has to be check fold. I mean, we have only backdoors. So I, I would check, but what if we had one heart? Would that change? That's, I think that's the more interesting. This has to be a check. Yep. But okay, if we had the ace of hearts, it would be a pot. And if we had ace of hearts with the backdoor flush draw, it's still a pot. Yeah. So if we had the not flush draw, it would be half a pot. With the backdoor, with just the not flush draw, it would be a check. Yeah. But if we had one ace of hearts, then solver would use that blocker to just bluff the pot with the pot sizing. Yeah, but it, it makes sense. I mean, uh, we have done work. Yeah, it's a pot fold if you have just one ace of hearts. But when we have used poker choose to see how it affects the fold equity, having a high heart uh, decreases forty-six percent, the chance of him having the flush. And then the question is if we put and he has something like nine high flush draw, he can't call with just the flush draw. So we have a huge fold equity versus flush draws. And the chance of him having a flush draw goes down. And if we can increase fold equity from forty to forty-five percent, the impact is actually quite a lot. Uh, if you use draw, you, you have to put a question too. Alright, uh, try aces with a cut shot. At least becomes easy. Um, why would we do anything else but check? Uh, we have a cut shot, it would be nice to hit the six or queen on the turn. And I was so wrong. I was so, I didn't even wait for the chat pros to make a poll. I, I was so hasty. I was so sure it's a check, but it, it's a board where we bet most of our range. Three thirds of our range is a bet and most of the bets are half a pot, so. Yeah. I, I should probably practice a lot of different board textures. What are the textures where we bet half a pot? What are the textures where we mostly put? What are the textures? Where we both mostly check us? King and six. Almost seventy percent of hands we bet half a pot. So it's most of our range. And with ace, ace, check four. Seventy-five percent of our ace, ace, check four is, is half a pot. We check. Alright. If we didn't have any hearts or spades, it would be a check. So I, I wasn't that far away. So here you can see that no red or black cards, it's seventy percent check. And the four of hearts makes it eighty-four percent bet. So that four of hearts, if that i- if that was four of clubs or four of diamonds, this would be a check. So I wasn't that far away. And if we don't have the cut shot. Well. Uh, ace, ace, seven, four is still half a pot bet. So the cut shot doesn't really matter that much. But he bets with hearts. If he doesn't have ace of hearts or a flush draw, it becomes actually a check quite often. Yeah, I should probably practice a lot on different board textures. Uh, I know that's something that I, I should practice even in three bet pots or in raise pots, just to understand different board textures. You don't have to on every pot, I, I mean every flop individually, but there are certain like two broadways with connected and flush draw, or two, two high, one low rainbow or flush draw. So overall you would get how much you would get, probably ten to fifteen different board textures that then you can memorize overall strategy on those boards. So you know on, on boards where you should have high C bet frequency and when you should have low and what kind of sizing on different boards. But let's go here. Um, I know how I would play. If we three bet king, queen, nine and we can nine three dews, top pair and over, I know how I would play this one. Um, my, my strategy would be put, get it in, because he just doesn't have two pairs. And if he doesn't have two pairs, we are blocking the only set he should have often or oftenish. So we, we are just crossing his range and if we get it in, we are very often favored there even. So I would, I would put it. But on this board, we, uh, I mean, the overall strategy is probably a lot of checking, a lot of half of pots. So if we think about the overall strategy, there's not much putting. So is this the hand we want to put? Or, or sorry, if this is the hand that solver wants to put, I would put it. No idea what solver does, but I, I would, I would see that we, we benefit a lot from putting than betting half a pot, because yeah, we do block the condition, but that's why I would put it. Because I don't want to see the turn. I mean, the problem here is that whatever the turn is, we don't like it unless it's a king, queen or nine. I mean, if the turn is seven, suddenly he starts to have those two pairs in his range. For his flop condition. So we, we really want and, and if we put the turn, we, if we put the flop, we can shove the turn. If we bet half a pot on the flop, we can shove the turn. We have to see the river and then we are screwed. So I, I, I don't want to play river here out of position. I would put it. And for once, the solver does the right thing. It agrees with me. So, uh, what is amazing to me is that on nine three dews, we bet almost everything. I mean, we bet over eighty percent of our hands and, and it's half, half to half of pots and full pots on this board texture. And with king, queen, nine. As long as you bet, it's fine. And if we had a flush draw, it would be half a pot. Yeah. Pretty much. Of course, then if we had a king high flush draw, we would have a damn strong hand. No reason to force the opponent out. But now when our hand is vulnerable, it, it's like old school poker. We bet for protection. And by the way, for all PLO minds, when I, just before I started the stream, I thought about, should we play actually PLO, because there are sixty players on running ones. PLO then. So the PLO then is, I, I can see what's the status now, but PLO then is running twenty-four seven. I don't know what has happened, but oh my God, PLO then has ten tables open in the morning. Damn. Okay. Oh, I hate this one already. Ace, nine, six. So it's a board where we should have a high C betting frequency. And then we have a queen, check, then seven, with, with this kind of, it's, it's a trunk and nuts. If you're drunk, this is a monster. I mean, i- i- if you're, if you're really drunk, then try to say as fast as you can what you have on this hand. I mean, we have a cut shot, flush draw, backdoor, flush draw, backdoor, straight draw. Everything. And we are blocking everything. But what in the world do we do here? Do we want to stack off? I mean, i- if we bet B can open a raise, we have to stack off, but do we want? Uh, do we want him to fold? Do we want him to call? And if we, I mean, on this board, if we have some checks, what are the hands that we're going to check on this board? And I, I have to say that first I wanted to put, then I wanted to have a pot. Now I'm thinking about, is this a hand we check? I have no idea. So, well, chat pro Sunday says bet small. You know, you know it the best. So half a pot, uh, what if the opponent pots? What do we do? Is it a bet small fold or is it a bet small and call? Oh, I'm bleeding here. Damn. Blood everywhere. So uh, I, I would assume it's a call. I mean, we have, oh, it's not. Is it? No, it, it's a fold. No, not potential. Like if he has uh, ace with, with, with the hard straw, we're drawing pretty thin. So yeah, it's half a pot fold. I, it would suck to fold that hand. I mean, yeah, if, if you want to run the hand out, just let me know. No problem in that. So if you want to see how the hand continues, just, just say it in the chat as fast as possible. Um, with that hand, I would hate to bet fold. I mean, it would hurt my soul. So I, I would probably put it and then we can get in it. Try kings on check eight dews. One vote for pot. Then it's a pot fold. Ew. And then there's one check. I, I would lean towards checking too. But ninety percent of times the solver disagrees with me. So I've learned that what's my initial reaction, I should often call the opposite to get the right answer on solver. No one bets half a pot, which would be the right answer. And on these boards, most of the sizing is half a pot. Not much putting going on. And yeah, we would put with flush draw, if we had the flush draw with the backdoor flush draw, it would be half a pot. And overpair and backdoor flush draw, half a pot. And then fold to a raise. Is it? Yes. Fold to a raise. Try aces once again on ten, seven, three. Uh, it's, it's almost the same board texture as the previous. The previous is, was check eight four, if I remember right. So you could pretty much see what the overall frequency is on these boards. If you remember what happened a minute ago. Try to remember, what was the frequency on check eight four? I think there's the key. And everyone is putting, damn. Because I'm, I'm, I, I was sure it's fifty percent ten seconds ago until the Twitch chat was single minded for putting. I, I would assume that on this board, most of our range uses half a pot. So is this a hand we want to put? Oh, poker boots. I, I probably do, I would say half a pot. But wow. I mean, the flop drops by one. Check eight four drops to ten, seven, three. Same still, I mean, to me it's the same board. Same structure, same gaps, but now this changes a lot. In, in, in the check eight four or whatever it was, there was a lot of half of putting and not much putting. Now, as soon as the flop comes to smaller, there is one fourth of the hand puts. But with poker aces, ace, ace, nine, four is put only when you have the not flush draw without the backdoor flush draw and, and wow. Once again, if you have the backdoor flush draw and a hard blocker, it becomes a check very often. Unless you have the backdoor not flush draw, but then it's fifty fifty. Uh, I, I would say that versus raise, i- it has to be a fold. I mean, it has to be. Yeah. And we would oh, if we have a backdoor flush draw, it becomes a call. What? I mean, if this was a four of spades, I would still fold it. That's insane. Because once we call, then the pot is two hundred seventy or something. Uh, these are half of blinds and we have fifty behind. It's, it's like the SBR is zero point twenty-five. So does the backdoor flush draw actually matter that much? Because whatever the turn is, can we fold when we had one to six bottles? I mean, we need sixty percent equity to call if he shoves the river and versus these range, we always have that. Uh, this, I, I don't get it. I mean, I, I don't even get it that we have a calling range here. Because i- if you call, then you will have around twenty-five big lines behind and the board is around hundred and fifty big lines. So are we actually folding any rivers? And if we are not folding rivers, why not get it in? Uh, I, I don't advise anyone to put yourself in a situation where you call and create super low SPR for the next three, like less than zero point three. When you have showdown equity in your hand. Uh, you, you can just call a raise. If you have a draw, like your hand is king high. You have a monster draw, but you have to hit something to win the hand. You, you know that you're not winning the hand with king high. And then you can call and leave yourself three dollars behind. Because if you miss it, you can fold and save three dollars. But when you have this showdown value like poker aces and you call and then you have one sixth of a pot behind and opponent's range is still wide. I mean, versus two pairs, you have equity, versus parent draws, you have equity and so on. So I, I wouldn't advise that you put yourself in that situation. Because solver can play perfectly. Solver knows exactly the opponent's range. So solver can make perfect river decisions. But as humans, we can't. You have no idea about his actual range. So i- if you make huge calls and then fold rivers with poker aces, when, when you need sixteen percent equity versus this range, those hero phones probably fire back way more than benefit you. Well, try aces, same kind of board, eight, seven, three. Uh, we do have a hard blocker now. Uh, I'm actually interested to see when I get my KIC as computer, I, I hope to get it next week. And then I, I can make my own solver sims and calculations. Where I'm not sure how it works. I have never used solver that much at, at least, but But just see how the solver strategy changes when we know to offer certain things like, on PLO then, 99% of opponents don't dunk flops. They don't have a leading range on the flop. So how does solver's strategy change when we say that opponents never lead? Which means that their checking range is stronger than what solver now thinks? Or no one folds to a three bet ever? Solver folds 15% or 20% to three bets. In real life, people don't fold anything. What does that do to our three betting range? Do we three bet more? Do we three bet less? What happens to the post-flop? So I'm interested to see how our current solver strategy, which is more towards midstates, how does it change when we start to put elements from small slates? How does it change? What are the key concepts that we have to change? Because no one has done it. I have never seen anything like that. Because those who have the hardware to make solver sims, they don't care about PLO then. But that's about to change. So I'm interested to see. And of course, I'm interested to see, finally, how would solver play in splash pots? If we put their 10 BBs dead money, what happens to our preform strategy? So I'm very curious to see what happens. And here, people would check. I wouldn't be surprised if solver wants to pot here. Okay, we go with the chat. I would choose the red peel. But luckily, the chat was right. We wouldn't pot this hand without the flush draw. Okay. Okay. Oh, this is check. Oh, sorry, with this hand. I mean, 3%. So 1 out of 33, this would be a pot. So I wasn't completely wrong. 1 out of 33, you can pot this hand. Just check the rest. Wow. All right. Top set, no hearts. Blocking or not. Does it matter? If you were here, in the beginning, we had a flop of ace, check eight. And on that flop, we were potting and betting most of our range. So this is never a check. This is a board where we bet a lot. We bet our whole range. And if I remember right, there was a lot of potting going on on ace, check nine, with most of our range. And of course, our small blind tree bed range just hits this board every time. I'm not sure if we have a hand in our small blind tree bed range that doesn't connect with this board. I mean, the smallest rundowns are probably 10, 8, 9, 7s, which would have a rap. So this has to be a pot. But it's only 50/50. But with poker aces, even when we pot the nine, it's just a pot. Yeah, well, the thing is that you pot and pretty much, any non-hard turn, you just get it in. And yeah, round suck. But the thing is that if you bet small, you cannot shove a blank turn. You can bet big, and then you would face a river. So in my mind, it's easier to dodge one turn than to dodge turn and rivers. So it's just pot it. Yeah, there's a lot of bad runouts, but half of the deck is decent. And he calls. All right, well, now we've had a bad runout. Oh, that's nasty. Can we change it? Yeah, let's change it a little. Let's make it five of hearts. Because king of hearts completes everything. I mean, not those ones. Five of hearts. The thing is that your SBR is less than one. We don't have any hearts in our hand. Would we check or do we just jam? And I wouldn't be minding actually jamming because he has either flush draw or he has a rap. And if those are 50/50, then it's plus IV to shove. No idea what solver does. 25, that would be nasty. I have no idea. No, the solver would shove, yeah. Because the thing is that on the flop, he has raps and flush draw. He might have some chaps, nines, ace, check type of hands. So he's not having the flush draw always. And if he has 50/50 flush draw or something else, it becomes plus IV to shove. Because then you have over 50% equity versus this range, and SBR is less than one. So you just say yolo and get it in. All right. Try kings on 10, 9, 2s. If I was playing, I would just give up. That flop is horrible. But, I mean, kings or sixes, they are kind of blockers. But they are bad blockers for future usage. Like six, if the turn is seven or eight, you are blocking the bottom of this rate. Or if the turn is queen or check, you are blocking the top of this rate. And I don't know what's the word for those blockers. But I mean, if you have a poker chaps and the turn is queen, you have good blockers, you are blocking all the straights. But when you are blocking just one end of the strait, I don't know what's that called, if there's any good term for that. I mean, is that a Turkish blocker? Oh, I don't play turnies, poker. No. I try to stay away from turnies as much as possible. Right? I don't know what solver does. Probably bet half a pot. When in doubt, go for mixed. No, solver would check. And what if opponent bets half a pot? He's just a check fold. Yeah. All right. So solver does what I would do. Just check fold, give up. You don't have to win every pot. All right, top and bottom, with some straight blockers, backdoor flush draw. What's the sizing? Or do we do some tricky check raises here? One of those funny things, I could give you solid reasoning for check half a pot or pot. And that's the funny thing in poker, that you can often justify almost anything with certain estimations. And that's the hard part. Two people could have quite different opinions. Like someone would say that we should pot because, and I would say that we should check because. And in a sense, both could be right. That one makes poker so hard that there are no, or there aren't that much absolute truth. There are some absolute truths, and those are with mathematics. Like if someone shoves a pot and you have just the flush draw, you cannot call. Because it's wide to IV. That's an absolute truth. It doesn't change unless the opponent's range is super wide, which then is not realistic. I have to send a message that I'm going to call back soon. Not sure if that was important call. Well, let's see whether it's crisis or not. Yeah, so there aren't that much absolute truths, which makes it so funny. Because solver gives us one truth, but remember, it's not optimal. It's an absolute truth. Solver's strategy is not optimal in real life. It's optimal versus solver players of solver strategy, and no one plays solver strategy. So once they deviate from that strategy, you can deviate to the opposite direction and exploit them more. And that's, as poker would say, that's why we love this game. Because that's what makes poker so fun. It can evolve, and good players find ways to exploit other players. But I still have no idea what to do here. Chat is unanimous, 100% bet small, and it is the current answer. Oh, there's 1% check. What in the world is this 1% check? PBT range to clipboard. I have to open this 1% range on my notepad. Let's see what happens. Whoa. Whoa. Oh, I don't, I have no idea what. But that was, that was, I think it copies the whole range here. I don't know what is the 1% check. Ace, ace, king, queen with a king high flush draw going for check raise. Weird. Well, we bet half a pot. And what if opponent shoves? I assume that we get it in, two pairs. No, just call. Solver puts, I mean, look at here. Solver puts himself in a really nasty situation. SBR like six and a half if he shoves. Ew, I don't like that. I would say that in real life, try to get the fuck out of these situations. Don't get into this. I mean, just shove the flop and don't start to make hero folds here. And now when opponent shoves, solver probably folds. Yeah, hero folds. Ew. Don't go in there. Hello, SSJF. Let's do a couple of more. And then I think it's time to do something else for a while. Overpair with a four. No hearts. Oh, SSJF, I just explained in the beginning that a lot of those questions, reasons versus bucket tool, both are fine. Then it's more about, do you have access to either one? Because if you have, then use that one. And these reasons is graphically probably better looking. It's a bit easier to use, and it's more for post-flop. You can do pre-flop, but it's more for post-flop. While the bucket tool at the moment is more for pre-flop, they are adding some post-flop stuff. But in short, bucket tool is pre-flop, reason is post-flop. But both can do both. And it doesn't matter which one you choose, you learn a lot. So I can't say which one is better because they do a different thing in a different way, and they look different. But I love both of them. Both of them shows me how bad I am with solver's strategy. If I was playing, I would probably bet two turns and fold to a raise. And we don't have that option. So I would go with the Twitch chat and say half a pot and fold to a raise. But I suck. Peter Nunn, thanks for following. Solver would check. And what if opponent bets half a pot? Is it a check call or a check fold? Finnish players would check raise, just to show them that. Don't fuck with me. Oh, my God. Oh, this is sick. Solver would check raise this flop too. Why? Why? Oh, my God. And it's raising only 13%. And this is the hand, is it because? No, it would raise even with the flush draw. Because I was thinking that if we don't block any hearts, then there's a higher chance that opponent has a flush draw instead of two pairs. Oh, my God, this is the highlight of the day. I don't understand. So maybe solver has an inner fin in it. And every now and then, it says that, fuck it, I don't know. The simulation didn't go this far. I have no idea. I press the pot button. Screw you button. Wow. I didn't see that one coming. If any one of you saw that one coming. Yeah, that's the thing. He shouldn't have two pairs often. But what if we do the sim and give him a bit wider button range? And say that he never folds to a three bet? Then the chance of him having a two pair close up a little, does it change? I don't know yet. Well, this is, I mean, if you see someone three betting ace, king, four, and then check raise in check four tree, without any spades, any hearts, would you be that, yeah, that's CTO? Or would you be saying that, what the fuck, that is maniac? I would be interested to see that one of those players who have done a lot with solver, like Ruas or Jay Nandes or those, would they be that, yeah, that's a clear check raise? Like, is this an operator check raise in solver's strategy? Or is this some weird glitch in the matrix? Because I'm super amused. I'm probably going, I'm going to take a screens out of this. Because I need to ask people, can we do the same spot? Yep, okay. I'm absolutely, no, now we have a different hand. Let's do a new spot then. Yep. I need to ask solver people that, is this an operator raise? All right, now something happened to our internet connection. What? Not sure if you guys hear me, but it seems that we are dropping a lot of frames. All right. Well, let this be the last one. I have no idea if you can hear me or not. I'm getting a lot of drop frames, so it seems that we don't have internet connection at the moment. Wow. All right, yeah. The internet connection is really bad, and I don't know why. I, probably someone is doing something with it. So let's just end here. Because no one can see anything. So thank you all. This would be the last anyway. So let us stop here. All right. And I might stream later tonight, might not. But I will see you then later on the next week. And it's just the end here because connection went rogue. Right? Thank you and bye-bye. Thanks for following. Right. Thank you and bye bye. Thanks for following. I will see you later.